December 10th to order. First, I'll acknowledge that we're on the unceded traditional territory of the Comox First Nation. And then I would like to welcome our first delegation, the Comox Valley Conservation Planning or Conservation Partnership and Megan Kurzens.
Over to you.
Thank you.
Hello, folks. Here with a slightly different hat on, but overlaps. So I'm here to represent the Comox Valley Conservation Partnership. If you're unfamiliar with who we are, it's a partnership of over 22 local conservation and stewardship organizations that organize around education and advocacy in the Comox Valley. In 2017, we presented a symposium here in the Comox Valley with a public event. It was an eco assets themed symposium with a climate change opening event. This event was actually picked up by the Partnership for Water Sustainability in B.C. and carried forward, and conferences were done in Animo and Parksville in 2018 and 2019. And in 2020, it's coming back to the Comox Valley with the Conservation Partnership as the lead. So the event is April 22nd to 24th. And on the ground here in the Comox Valley, some of the lead organizers you may recognize are the Comox Valley Conservation Partnership, the Cumberland Community Forest Society, and also your watershed outreach and engagement project is involved, the Connected by Water. I'm here today just to actually plant a seed about the event because it's very exciting related to the work that's happening right around this table and at the CVRD. The opportunities that exist around this symposium include public engagement events leading up to. We had a packed house for our Wednesday night public event, the last time this conference was presented. So an opportunity to profile local climate mitigation and adaption projects, much like what is just rolled out in terms of the sea level rise analysis that the CVRD has done, sharing watershed protection conservation activities, highlighting the leadership that is right here at the CVRD on both a political and staff level, as well as partnerships with the community sector, showcasing collaborations, site media tours, linkages with the school district, and in general, amplifying and showcasing the positive work that's being done related to water sustainability. I wanted to just show you a couple of the locally organized symposium topics because many of you, as well as staff and local government, will be engaging. We're working on a water place and reconciliation opening session with KFN as a starting place to begin to discuss the impacts of a changing climate within our community. This will be familiar, regional collaboration towards natural asset management, which is a wonderful opportunity to discuss the work of the MNAI, City of Courtney's IRMP process, community plans that are unfolding, and watershed protection projects that involve many partners and complex relationships. Engaging community and climate strategies is another one of the themed sessions, which has a look at meaningful community engagement around building climate resiliency. Again, ties in really well to OCP updates that are underway, urban forest strategies in places like Cumberland and Courtney. And we just see, you know, community engagement and partnership engagement is at the top of the agenda, as we know it is for your board around that being a strategic priority, those linkages with the community sector. And we're also going to be doing storytelling, which is one of our favorite activities and sessions around stitching together the altered landscapes of the Comox Valley, which is an analysis of how settlement, logging, mining, and agriculture have impacted the landscape and hydrology of the Comox Valley, and how conservation projects are a sort of frontline way of responding to climate change and building resiliency. And those projects will be familiar, Courtney Estuary, Morrison Headwaters, Perseverance Watershed, Comox Lake. These are the heart of our climate resilience story in the Comox Valley. So we wanted to just let you know that this event was happening. We haven't come with an ask, but if you are like, wow, that looks really great, we'd like to put our logo on that, you're welcome to do that. We are resourced through the budgets and line items of existing projects and through registration, which is now open. The registration portals can be found on the Comox Valley Land Trust's website. And we want you to make sure you block off the dates. If you have wonderful ideas that link to any of those themes or sessions that I presented, I would love to hear from you. There's opportunity for within the symposium and outside the symposium programming. And those of you who know my approach to event management, it's never just inside the walls. So really interested in the ideas that might exist around this table and at each of your respective local governments as well to make this a really incredible event. And unless you have any questions, that's all I was here to do.
Director Hamir?
I do have a few ideas. Not surprising. The CVRD did conduct a Solom River agricultural watershed demand modeling process. So we have some of the results of that process, which I think would be great, as you mentioned, outreach to the community about what is happening to the Solom and why there's a concern and what the issue is.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if that's a, if, I don't know if, Mr. Dyson, if there would be other, like an opportunity for us to participate with that project specifically?
It would be less, sorry. Wait for, well, it would be less about profiling that project in this context as it would be about talking about the community engagement process that informed that process. So, but I mean, if we're naming, if you think about IRMP, if you're thinking about the watershed protection plan, the resulting Solom River groundwater protection or?
Headwater.
Headwater and groundwater protection would be an example of a collaborative process. So it would fit really well under that umbrella.
Okay.
As opposed to being necessarily an engagement, like come and engage on that topic.
Okay.
It would be an example of an engagement project.
And so are you looking for more of those examples, or are you looking for something that's actively happening?
We are looking for examples of things that could happen. A wonderful way to look at this would be, I've noticed that regional directors have increased their interest in engaging with your area residents. So is there something leading up to this event that connects to water sustainability and water stewardship that would be really great programming leading up that we could help support, promote, and help people get in the doors to engage? So it's that idea of collaborative or parallel programming. I think that's the one that pops up for me when you're thinking about Area C, the Monday before the session, Area C does X, Y, Z, and asks some questions or engages there, the populace.
Okay. Yeah, because we are doing our outreach work.
Or Area B.
Maybe working into that.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, when it comes to outreach and engagement ideas and tactics, I'm super happy to have those conversations away from this table, too, to go, hey, why don't we do this? Or this would tie into this session. So, yeah, super happy to work with you on that.
The other one that, again, I'm not 100% sure how it might fit, is the Ministry of Agriculture is currently conducting a climate, climate change adaptation, like a strategic plan for Vancouver Island. And it has a node in MIRVOL, like, so the Comox Valley is one node where it's gathering information and input from farmers primarily. So if there is, and water has come up to be like one of the top topics.
You know what I think the great example is here, Arzina, and you're nailing it, and we can talk about it further, is that when we're talking about water sustainability in the Comox Valley, there's a few different lenses that we do it through. Talking about the Comox Lake watershed, obviously, that's a very specific lens and function. But when we talk about water sustainability in the broader sense, it's a great chance to boost the profile of those other sources and functions within the area that we share. So I think you flagged something that's a really great, you know, to make sure that as we're talking about the Comox Lake watershed, we're also talking about some of the smaller systems.
Okay, thanks.
Different, not necessarily smaller.
Director Fish?
Thanks, Chair. Today, the Water Committee just received the Courtney's Water Action, Water Smart Action. Anyways, can't remember the exact name.
The Conservation Plan?
Yeah, it's basically a conservation plan. And so we might be looking at some interest in collaboration. I don't know if you have an in at the City of Courtney.
I have some ins.
Yeah.
No, City of Courtney is absolutely, we're doing this, these presentations to all local government and encouraging this type of engagement.
Okay.
Welcome to talk to you very soon.
We'll pass you off to them next time, then. Thanks.
Any further questions? All right. Well, thank you, Megan. I'm sure there's a lot of synergies that can be made here, yes. And we'll put our minds to that.
Okay.
So thanks very much.
And we'll be in touch directly as well. Thank you for your time.
So all in favor of receipt? It's carried. And moving on to C, Management Report.
Over to you, please.
And any comments or questions on the Management Report? All in favor? That's carried. And D reports Comox Valley Regional Transit Fares Report.
Over to you.
Okay, and we're welcoming Chris Gregory. Is he going to?
Yep. Mike Zabarsky is here to give an introduction to the representatives from B.C. Transit.
Thank you.
Thanks through the chair of the committee. So one of the responsibilities that is CVRD's and this transit partnership is setting the fares for the Comox Valley Transit System. And every couple, three years, we do get a review and a report from B.C. Transit. They are the experts in fares, and their report is attached to the staff report and the agenda here. So we have Chris Gregory and Ryan Dennis, both from B.C. Transit, to provide a bit of a presentation, overview the report and the recommendations, and then we'll all be here for questions after.
Thank you, Mike. So as mentioned, my name is Christopher Gregory. I'm a Senior Revenue Advisor with B.C. Transit, and I've come up today to talk to you a bit about transit fares. So. In the agenda for today, we'll go through the fare review, touch on the B.C. Transit Fare Strategy, some current fares. Second part of it is a complimentary analysis, which I understand has been an ask from your board to look at complimentary fares for youth in the region. And we'll have some time for questions at the end. Before we dive in, though, a quick overview of how transit's funded in B.C. So for conventional service, approximately 50% of funding comes from provincial funding sources. The other 50% is on the local government to foot. So majority of that usually comes through property taxes, as well as fares collected on the bus. So fares are an important part to continue to offset increases in property fares or property taxes. So as Mike mentioned, we try to do this on a three- to five-year basis. So we were actually up here for a fare implementation September 2018. So we've come back to you a little bit early, but this is to touch on a couple of small things in preparation for advanced fare collection. So guiding all of our fare reviews around the province is the B.C. Transit Fare Strategy. This comes with a recommended suite of products and prices, and really, it can be summed up as follows. So we're looking to make fare structures that can be, that are simple and easy to understand, that are easy to buy and sell, so from the customer and the vendor perspective. We'd like them to have low cost of operation and debt service. So that means the technology used needs to be effective, and we want to reduce issues with theft and fraud. So when we look at the Comox Valley's transit system currently, in terms of fare alignment, we recommend that you look to eliminate the use of transfers, and the discount provided on your discount monthly passes is a little bit higher than we would recommend. Also of interest within the Comox Valley is the dual product program between the Comox Valley Regional District and City of Campbell River. So in tandem with this fare review going on in the CVRD, I've been engaged with the City of Campbell River, who has recently approved a fare change effective April 1st, seeking to align the prices of dual pass products in both communities. So primary reason that we're here today is to touch on advanced fare collection and prepare you guys for the eventual rollout of this new technology. So this will be the next generation of fare collection equipment onboard the buses. Currently, there's GFI. This next generation is looking to engage with an account-based structure, improving the convenience for our customers, and improving some of the data that we can get out of your transit system. We'll look to incorporate technology similar to your credit card, where you can tap to pay. And the expected structure for advanced fare collection does not support transfers, hence why I'm up here today. So in place of transfers, we're recommending the Day Pass On Board Program. So the Days Pass On Board Program moves the sale of transfers from vendor locations to onboard the bus, similar to where you'd get a transfer now. In the five communities that have currently implemented it, with two others pending, including the City of Campbell River, we've seen increases in revenue and ridership as customers move to purchase day pass products more regularly. And this more regular purchase of day pass products, in turn, generates a higher ridership, moving customers to becoming regular transit users. So purchase a day pass product, board the bus, two times your base cast fare. So in the CVRD, that would be $4, and you can ride the transit system all day. So a couple proposed fare options for the CVRD to consider, and keeping in mind that we're looking to make fare structures that are simpler and easier to understand, prepare you for advanced fare collection, introduce the day pass on board product. And additionally, we're recommending that you extend the audience for the Comox Valley specifically, semesters pass from just post-secondary to include students or your youth, which extends an 18% discount above buying four regular monthly passes. So option one, we recommend, which is recommended in both the City of Campbell River and CVRD, maintains your current fare structure and pricing with the addition of day pass onboard and removal of transfers. Option two seeks to fully align the CVRD's fare structure to that of the B.C. Transit Fare Strategy, resulting in higher revenues but decreased ridership relative to option So during this process, with dual passes, liaison calls were made between staff in both the City of Campbell River and CVRD, and it resulted in a preference for option one, which meant that the City of Campbell River will move to align to what the CVRD's current fares are now. And that was approved in November 2019. So anticipated implementation date is April 2020 for that. Additional consideration here is the alignment of custom fares to conventional. So in each of our systems that we're going through with fare reviews, we're recommending for equity across product types, so whether that be conventional transit buses running down, or custom service, so that being HandyDart, that prices are aligned. So currently, your monthly pass for custom service or HandyDart is set at $53, and we're recommending you bump that to $55, aligning with your conventional monthly pass. So as mentioned, I understand there's been an interest in complimentary fares for youth. So as part of this process, I engaged with our planning and finance teams to come up with some estimates of the impacts that you might see in the CVRD. Before we get into those impacts, though, I think it's important that we consider what the purpose is of moving to complimentary fare structures. Two of the key purposes that I've seen in other systems is ridership in the environment, so shifting people away from cars onboard the buses, and the other one being affordability. So when we think about ridership and shifting people away from cars, fares usually tend to be lower on the totem when we, to getting people out of their cars compared to the quality of service. So quality of service being things like the frequency of buses, the reliability, on-time performance, service areas. And when we consider affordability as a reason to move towards complimentary fares, usually a better way to target or be more effective with the spending is looking to social programs. So targeting specifically that the individuals who are maybe less fortunate, that transit fares are impacting more heavily than others. So using the same fare structure as option one, I engaged with our planning team to come up with an estimate of what kind of demand increase would we expect to see with movement to free transit. And what we saw is that there would be to be additional buses and service hours to maintain that current quality of service. So on one hand, you've got the loss of revenues associated with moving to complimentary fares, but you've also got additional costs to maintain that current quality of service. So this results in impacts between, we're estimating between $650,000 and $865,000 annually. So it's a sizable amount of money. There's also some timeline considerations with moving to complimentary service. The Transit Improvement Process, or TIPS, is an 18- to 24-month process and involves securing funding and for the procurement of buses to support initiatives such as this. So the TIPS process usually kicks off in the spring and summertime, and then moves through the procurement process. So it's a bit more of a timeline-intensive process than just setting a fare, whereas if, what we're recommending is option one today, which would be 16 weeks to implementation, or on April 1st, is what we're suggesting.
There are three questions. Do you want to wait till the end, or would you like to take the questions now?
I think we're almost at the end, actually.
Okay. Great. Perfect, perfect timing.
Yes. No, thank you for the time today. So in summary, yeah, we're recommending option one for implementation, April 1st, 2020. So that introduces the day pass on board product, elimination of transfers, and extends that semester pass discount to youth. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Hamir?
Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to ask about the removal of transfers. Is that just between, say, Courtney and, or the Comox Valley and Campbell River, or is that within the system? So if I was on one bus and I was in downtown at an exchange and then went onto a second bus, is that the transfer you're talking about?
Yes. So the, sorry, through the chair, the transfer we'd be considering there is when you're on one bus within the CVRD, and you get off that bus and get onto another bus, you'd flash a transfer. So currently, transfers are eligible for single-direction travel, 60 minutes. It's not currently possible to estimate what the current enforcement or?
Lack of.
Yes. For how, whether transfers are being enforced for that policy.
Okay. So switching that to then a pass, that would allow you the entire day of, to go back and forth for $4? Like, is that what the?
Yes. So for $4, you purchase the day pass onboard the bus now.
Yeah.
And you'd be able to ride the CVRD transit system all day.
All day. Okay. That makes sense. I was just wanting to make sure that we weren't creating, like doubling the cost for people within the system, but it sounds like if they're, if, it would if they were going one way, but if they're making a round trip, then, then it's all evened out?
Yes. So if they're going, taking either multiple buses one way or taking a return trip, they'll end up paying the same fare.
Okay. And then just, I just wanted to double-check the change in the recommended price for the HandyDart. It went from 52 to what?
I believe it was 53 to $55.
To 55. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Director Fish?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, and thanks very much, Chris. I really appreciated the report. Of course, I have a lot of interest in transit as well, and I really, I really enjoyed reading about what it would take to make fares free for people under 18. The first question I have is with the regular monthly adult fare versus the dual, and it's like $5 difference, and that's the ability to ride in Campbell River system anytime you want? So why bother having a different price?
So it's entirely up to each jurisdiction to set prices. Historically, or at least in the previous fare review, it was set as a $5 premium to ride between the communities. If the, both communities were looking to kind of amalgamate or run services between them more regularly, it's absolutely a possibility. But the current standpoint, if you were comparing other systems like Victoria and Duncan, you'd be expected to purchase a monthly pass in both communities.
And somebody with a semester pass, are they, do they qualify for riding on Campbell River system?
So it would depend on the semester pass. There's a CVRD-specific semester pass, and there's also a dual semester pass for post-secondary students.
Okay. And the whole idea of a payment method, you know, I jump on the bus and I want to get a day pass, can I pay with my credit card or with my phone, or where are we with that? When, might something like that happen?
Yes. So, and whole purpose behind this report is to prepare you guys for advanced fare collection. The RFP process was unfortunately canceled, and it's being reissued in the new year, looking to realign some requirements. Once that process kind of comes to a conclusion and we've collected some of the submissions, we'll have be more, have a better idea of timelines and considerations when that'll come in. But for the time being, no credit cards on the bus.
No credit cards? And, and which means no app either, or anything like that?
Not until we get to advanced fare.
Okay. And what about buying, I guess, a monthly pass online? Is that, that's not possible either right now, or?
It's not currently possible. I think there might be some considerations where you could perhaps send out a mail-out pass and set up your own vendor online, but it's not something that B.C. Transit would be involved in.
Right. But you would move beyond that, I guess, with some sort of app or some sort of credit card?
Yes. When we move to advanced fare, we'd hope to see an integration in that account-based environment, so customers can download an app or a website to preload their fare prior to their transit trip.
Yeah. I could see that making a big difference. I'm often thinking I'd love to jump on that bus if only I had purchased a ticket somewhere or had cash on me, but, yeah.
Yes.
Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Director Cole Hamilton?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Chris, for the presentation. And I wanted to ask about the semester pass, and I have to say, for me personally, as someone who buys two student passes every month for my kids, I'll appreciate the discount. And I'm, I'm just wondering if you have any figures on how that has, what impact that semester pass extending it to high school students, what impact that's had on ridership?
Yes, thank you. So through the chair, we can speak broadly about how price changes would impact riders. So when we consider monthly passes, I think it's at $35 for youth currently, and once we move to a semester pass for them, it's extending an 18% discount. So when we consider elasticity onboard transit, you would expect that with a decrease in price, you'd encourage more riders to get onboard the bus. It gets into a little bit complex math when you consider elasticity and specificities to the region, but transit as a whole is considered an elastic product. So we'd expect to see an increase in ridership for those semester pass users.
And is that semester pass for high school students, is that in place in other jurisdictions or communities?
So one of the reasons we recommend the semester pass here in the CVRD is the City of Campbell River currently offers a semester pass to their youth, so to ensure equity between users in both communities.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Director Hilian?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation, and I must say, you deserve a compliment on your dapper attire.
Thank you.
Yes. It's very impressive to see somebody here with a tie. Usually, it's just Director Arbor, so. Sometimes Director. So one of my lingering memories of a bus trip is when my son and I came back from being in Mexico on a red-eye flight to Vancouver, and I found that I had no Canadian currency in my pocket, only pesos and a credit card. And I also had a dreadful flu that I developed, and the driver out in Richmond took pity on me, and I was able to make it into downtown Vancouver and then get a transfer to Horseshoe Bay, basically on my pathetic state. So, so I'm just curious about how much of an issue fraud actually is at the current time, and to what extent driver discretion comes into play when dealing with, you know, some of the marginalized people that must climb on the bus from time to time?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. It's an interesting one when we consider fraud onboard transit. I think TransLink, I'm back on memory here, but I think it was about 2% of total fare revenues they were estimating onboard their system was related to fraud. Of course, it's not something we'd ever like to see. It's a bit hard to estimate, though, when we consider things like transfers and how were they being recorded. But yes, in moving towards a new fare structure and with advanced fare collection, we're hoping to mitigate fraud and theft issues onboard the system.
And is driver discretion, is that still something that we actually acknowledge?
Interesting question. Officially, the policy should be that customers be paying onboard the bus. Of course, I think there is a leniency there, driver to driver, but from an official standpoint, I don't think I can comment on that.
Thanks. One other question. The, when changes like this take place, do we have any sort of rider reference group that we consult with? I know I have one citizen in particular who is always sending me messages about transit that I relay to Mike Zabarsky. And I know you've got in the report that there'd be a sufficient notice period for any changes to the system, but is that something that we do, or do we just make these changes and then let people know?
So fares are a tricky bit. I don't think anybody likes to see rates go up, or taxes for that matter. But in order to continue funding and maintain those funding splits with our partners, so that being the province and property tax or homeowners in the region, it's a necessary step to maintain funding revenues for transit.
Right. And if this goes ahead, we would, you're recommending that it take place April 1st, so there'd be plenty of time to notify people of the changes?
Yes. And as part of that change, we'd make sure that there's a comprehensive marketing communications plan to get out to our customers. It also gives us some time to get you the new fare product.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
No further questions, but I have one further to Director Hilian's comments about the transfers. We're still in a cash-based system, so even though we will advertise the changes, I'm sure inevitably there'll be somebody who will show up with just the tunny in their hands, expecting to get to a certain destination, and they'll be asked for $4 instead. So is there going to be some sort of transition period where?
Race period? Grace period?
Yeah, grace period will allow the drivers to, to permit those people who, who are still surprised by the change?
Yeah, cool. Thank you for the question. Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, it's up to the local governments to set fares. Usually, in this other systems that we've seen this implemented, we recommend some sort of grace period, but it usually comes down to a local government decision, whether that's, you know, a week, couple days, however long it may be. But of course, the intention is that our marketing communication plan hits on the majority of our customers to prevent that sort of issue.
Okay, great, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor of receipt. That's carried. And there is a recommendation, and I guess I will ask Jake if you would read it.
Thank you. So the recommendation from the staff board is that Option 1 of the BC Transit Fare Review Report attached to the pending say of the staff report dated December 4, 2019, be approved for implementation in April 2020, and further that the April 2020 transit fare change include replacing transfers with the day pass onboard program, and finally, that the custom transit monthly pass price be increased to $55.
All in favor? Okay, go ahead.
Generally in favor, and I just, I just didn't see in Option 1, the, the, the ability for students to buy that semester pass, and it sounded like it was included in all the discussions we just had, but was that in, that's not, not in the motion either?
Mike Zabarski will answer your question. Yeah, so with the first part of that motion referencing Option 1 as detailed in the report, that's pretty clear in the report that the semester pass being extended to youth is, is part of Option 1.
Excellent.
So I think we're covered.
Then I'm in favor if anyone's counting.
Right, so we'll just do it again. First, seconded, so all in favor? Anyone opposed? That's carried. Okay, moving on to Comox, Strathcona Waste Management. Thank you. On to Russell.
Thank you very much, Chair and Directors, and I'm here wearing your Comox, Strathcona Waste Management hat. I think the only one in this community that has more hats than me was previous Megan Cursons.
[laughter]
And we're diminishing our services. We're down to 99 now. We used to have 102. But this is a very special service, and just one minute, I just need to adjust my tie. In that it is a service that extends the divorce with the Strathcona Regional District. It is a service that you share with the, you know, with the Strathcona Regional District, and as such, there is a board of 23 members that make the decisions on this. And just a show of hands, who here is a member of that board, regular member? So there's a few of you that, that aren't, so some of this will be news to you, but I just want to say why we're here, and that is that the, that, that board had its strategic planning session a number of months ago, and in particular was looking at ways of doing business differently and opening the, the role of communication amongst the two regions, and also looking at ways of collaboration and working together. So some of the changes that are now in, in effect is that the role of Chair is shared between the two regional districts, so one meeting will be chaired by their Chair, and one meeting here will now be chaired by our Vice Chair. There's also new opportunities for engagement with staff. Twice a year, we have meetings where we have round tables, and we can dig into the depths of some of the issues that, burning issues that are of interest to the Directors, so that's happening on a regular basis. And then this was one other item, is that, that we come and just provide an update to each of the regional districts, because it enables us to reach out to the citizens when these meetings are recorded and recognize that all, not all the Directors on the region are part of this service, and it has a big impact to you and your taxes and services, and there's a number of positive things moving forward. So I'll just pass it on now to Andrew McGifford. He's the Senior Manager of Solid Waste, and he'll go through a brief presentation on some of the highlights, and we're both here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Russell. So through the chair to the committee. Yeah, as Russell mentioned, this is an update, so this is information that we've already shared with, with the board, but we'll just give you some high-level review of, of some of the projects that we're currently working on. So of course, our biggest and most important initiative is the Regional Organics Facility, and this has been ongoing over the last, last couple years, and we finally got to the point where we are able to have some success and, and a path forward. So over the past couple weeks here, we've, we've had a successful ALC application that has enabled us to, to site this facility in Campbell River on Block J, adjacent to our Campbell River Waste Management Center. There was a zoning amendment shortly after that that was approved by the City of Campbell River to permit composting on this, on this site. And then we also received board support at our November 14 meeting to, to progress forward with this, this project on that site. So, you know, this, this has been ongoing, but we now have that path forward, and the, and the timeline is set, so we will begin public consultation with the residents in Campbell River in late January and into early February. There's two open houses that we'll be conducting. There is a procurement process that we're going to undertake. We are going to undertake a, a request for qualifications here shortly, and then move into an RFP, and then hopefully have a decision to the board in June of 2020. At that point, we'll continue to refine the design and incorporate some of the public feedback that, that we'll receive for this project. And then construction would probably begin in late 2020, early 2021. Completion of that construction would occur in, in, in hopefully, 2021, with a phased approach that would be conducted in, in the communities that are participating. That includes Comox, Cumberland, Campbell River, and Courtney. So obviously, we still have that pilot project that's under, still underway, and we'll continue that with the Village of Cumberland and Comox, and likely, we would move into the other communities as, as, as a phased approach. When it comes to our landfill closure updates, the Campbell River Waste Management Center is on pace to, to close in late 2022. At that time, we would be working in the final two years within that, that two-year timeframe, where we have to have a, a closure plan provided to the, the ministry for that facility. We are, we are undergoing a refinement of, of the actual end date, so we hope to have that done in the next couple of months to understand if, if this facility would be closing in, in, in late 2022. If not, we'd be bringing that update to the board. It, you know, it, it is something that we would need to, to plan for over the next, next year, and we do have that in the financial plan as far as design of that closure, and we've gone through the, the process of confirming that within the financial plan over the next few years. With the Comox Valley Waste Management Center, we've had phase two of the historical cell just complete, virtually complete this last month here. The, the site still has some work to do as far as hydroseeding and some commissioning of our gas wells that need to occur, but that will occur in, in the next few months here, and, and as, as the weather permits, we'll, we'll hydroseed that, and we'll get some, or some growth on that, on that historical cell. We've also started the partial installation of landfill gas collection within our Cell 1, so that was just undertaken this past month. So we're beginning to install gas collection as we, as we fill that cell, so, and as soon as we get the ability to, we'll tie that into our gas flare and flare that off to reduce the impact of methane in the environment. As far as the remaining landfill cells that we have, we have three historical cells in Isabelle's and Tassus that are scheduled to be closed in 2025. Those originally were scheduled to be closed in 2015, but at that time, we went to the Ministry to ask for an extension based on improvements that were undertaken there and then the costs that were, that were being undertaken by this service. So that, that's coming up, and we will start to plan, and you'll see that in the financial plan in 2024 as far as design of those closures. And then Gold River is, is there shortly after, and Gold River is an inert landfill, so organic material would be shipped to the Campbell River site. And obviously, with the closure of Campbell River, all the waste will begin to come to the Comox Valley Waste Management Center in Cumberland. And... So when it comes to the engineered life of our engineered landfill cell and, and the expected life that we have for this cell, it's, it's important to note how we're going to be constructing this facility. So obviously, with the fill dates here, we anticipate the, the Cell 1 to be filled in And as you can see, that has an approximately six-year lifetime. And then with Cell 2, we construct on top of Cell 1, and that, you know, you know, we talk about the, the life of a cell and, and how much money we spend on that cell, but Cell 1 is integral to the, the building of Cell 2 and Cell 3. So you can see here that we have a, a little bit more life depending on how we start to divert material from, from the landfill and starting, you know, we could have an eight-to-12-year life of that, of that, of that Cell 2, bringing us hopefully to 2020, 2035. And then Cell 3, you know, it, it would possibly bring us to 2047. So as you can see here, this is the, the three cells that we have approved through the Ministry right now. We do have a master plan that identified three more additional cells, but we'd have to go to the Ministry to get that approval. As far as the 2020, 2024 plan, financial plan, the revenue, there's no change for the taxation, so we won't see any increase to the, the tax rate to the residents in, in 2020. Tipping fees, we have a proposed bylaw amendment to bring those tipping fees up to $140 for MSW in September of 2020, and that will go before the board for adoption in, in January. Our expenditure, our expenditures for the, for the year are fairly consistent year-over-year. We do have a increase in our, in our, in our non-recycle BC depots, and we've brought a request or a recommendation to the, to the board, and we've had some closures in the Campbell River area, and we're bringing more information to the board in, in, in January to, to review the other, other sites in, in the Comox Valley, but we'll see a slight reduction in, in the, in the cost of that depot based on the direction that we received. We do have some small organic projects planned for $50,000 that we'll bring forward to the board in, in January. That was a discussion at our last board meeting, so we'll include that. As far as our capital projects, the Regional Organics is, is the largest project, and in total, over the, the, the construction of that, it's anticipated that we'd spend $14.7 million. We have grant funding for that of $5.5 million, and the rest would be coming from our reserves. Cell 2 designed for the Comox Valley Waste Management Center is, is required. Even though we, we anticipate closing Cell 1 in 2023, there still has to be the, the anticipated filling of the, the, the bottom of Cell 2 with select waste, so it's important that we have that cell available in order to, to manage the, the waste within both Cells 1 and 2. So construction would be in line for 2021. And then the Campbell River Waste Management Center is, is preparing for design in 2020. We've committed to the northern communities in, in the, in the past year and, and moving into next year, reaching out more often to support their needs, and, and we've, we've asked them to please call us and, and engage with us if there's anything that they'd like to see improved at their sites. So we've built up a, a better relationship with the smaller communities in the northern SRD. We are assisting with the recycling initiatives that we have in, in all of our sites, and if there's opportunities for an EPR program to come forward, we are, we are assisting the municipalities in getting those in place. If we need to support the landfill operations in these, in these sites, in Isabelle's and Tassus and Gold River, we are supporting those communities as, as contractors. And when we have illegal dumping events, our, our staff are going up and, and supporting that outreach and making sure that we have the community events that we can engage with them and, and have these illegal dumping cleanups in, in the area. And of course, we've had the request for a small regional organics program, and we have a pilot project right now on Cortez and in Tassus that we are, are just initiating, so we plan to bring back a report next year for the board on what we can do with some small-scale organic diversion, so. And that's all I had.
Okay, we do have a question. Director Arbor?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. It's clear from your presentation, and, and please pass it on, that you have an excellent board. It's evident that this is really great work on behalf of that committee, and, and so, yeah, no, I, I mean, to tell the story of the waste management to me is, is really fantastic. It, it has increased taxes a little bit over the years, so, I mean, right now, we're, we're managing to keep it steady, but I think everybody has noticed that their tax bill has gone around that, but it sounds like we have such a good plan going forward. And just correct me if I'm wrong, because when I talk to my constituents, I usually say a few things like, "It's not just a hole in the ground anymore," right? It's a very engineered, and then the next thing, the cell process and the site is so clean, you know, even the bird management is, is incredible, and you go up there and it's like, you know, it, it just feels good. And then I talk about, and then I talk about the mad scientist lab, and, and I always talk about when we did the tour, and I forget the name of gentleman who was there, but he was talking to us, and there was this beeping sound in the back, you know? And eventually, I think Arzina asked, "Is that sound normal?" Or somebody, maybe Maureen, "Is that sound normal?" And he said, "Yeah, actually, I, I should probably get to that." You know, it's like, it's the mad scientist lab, and, and it's, you know, it's such impressive work, and all that collects all the, the bad stuff that otherwise would go in the environment and, and neutralizes it, and now we have a plan to make a product out of it. So I, you know, I think we have such a great story to tell, and, and I thank you to come, to come and share it with those who are, are not current members of, of that board.
Director Fish.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks so much for the, for the report. The only thing I wanted to add to that, and maybe you can just confirm, I think at the last board meeting, there was some interest expressed about looking at how we split up that $6 million requisition, and, and right now, I think we do it per $1,000 assessed value, but are we going to hear about the ability to split that up on a per household or per capita basis?
We can, we can definitely look at...
Or maybe I missed, maybe I misremembered the motion being made. I'll look to our CAO, I don't know if you remember.
I don't remember that.
Well, Beth, Beth is shaking her head, no. No one seems to remember. Even I don't remember, and I was sure that somebody brought them.
Did I make a comment about that? There was a question at the hospital board about looking at that differently, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I think something that's, might interest this, this board as well, because our property values are significantly higher, so in essence, you know, we're paying more for, for garbage than the average household in any other community, and it's, and it's something I'd like to see brought to a more fair distribution, so I'm just sharing that with the board, and maybe we'll tackle that at the next Solid Waste meeting.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Okay, thank you, Andrew. And all in favor of receipt? Any opposed? That's carried. We're moving on to the farmer's market, field, and exhibit, exhibition grounds use. Director Hamir?
I'm going to ask to excuse myself for conflict of interest, because I do benefit from whatever decision happens around where the market is located, so I'll be in that room.
Thank you.
You mean the 2:50 Saturday? Do you pay?
$3 if you have to. That's okay, Scott, just go in the kitchen. Thanks.
Okay, now I'll pass the mic over to staff.
Chair and Directors, thank you very much. Jennifer Zabidin is here to present this report, which is a, in response to the Farmer's Market Society that came before you with some concerns.
Thank you. So through the chair, Russell gave me a great opening there, so I'm just going to jump right in, and we've had some topics that are some, some questions around some of the practices and processes with the CVRD in respects to using the, the exhibition grounds, and one of them will be about rental rates, the displacements of a farmer's market during an event, or, or any other group being displaced when there's a, a big group that would like to use possibly the entire exhibition grounds, and associated impacts such as utilities availability and loss of business when we do move groups. But just before we get there, I would just like to say that the exhibition grounds are a versatile community facility. It is the home of, of several user groups, so Farmer's Market, Comox Valley Exhibition Fall Fair, the Curling Club, Therapeutic Riding, Music Fest, Rib Fest, and several K9 and Equine user groups. equine user groups, combined with the Comox Valley Regional District Programs and Special Events, and the self-directed leisure activities that these facilities attract, you know, these thousands of visitors to the site annually. So just to keep that in mind as we move through this. Uh-oh. There we go. So with the fees and booking process, so I'm going to start off first with the rental rates. So every four years, staff complete a comprehensive search on current user fees charged of similar exhibition grounds throughout the Vancouver Island and step off into the Lower Mainland at times. And it was recognized that within our last research that we did, which was in 2018, which took effect January 1st, 2019, was recognized that the exhibition grounds was 4% behind other exhibition grounds for rental costs for various field sizes, leased buildings, and barns, et cetera. The implementation of these fees and charges for the Comox Valley Exhibition Grounds assists in offsetting the increasing operational and maintenance costs of the exhibition grounds and the Stonehenge site. So we know it's an outdoor site, you know, it does take a lot of work to keep it up with the various weather seasons that we get, the various users that we get, so we need to stay on top of that. And having fees and charges is good fiscal management, and it's, you know, financial best practices, which is one of the cores of the C V R D financial planning process. So wherever possible, ongoing operations should be funded from ongoing revenue sources such as taxations and user fees. So a little bit about the farmer's market. Well, historically, the farmer's market rental costs, including the addition of the electrical access, are reasonable and affordable approximately at $3.50 per table, and that equates to about $2,700 per year in the rental fees for the exhibition grounds. Bearing in mind that the exhibition grounds are used from mid-April to end of September, early October, and then the other locations that they travel to within Courtney up at the Native Sons Hall, and I believe at the Legion, when they are moved from the Native Sons Hall. For the last few years, the Comox Valley Farmer's Market has also received a fund from Electoral Areas Arts and Culture Grant of around 4,000 for their operations. Part of this grant, in our discussions with the farmer's market, is part of this grant could be used to pay, you know, the approximate 2,700 a year in rental fees for the exhibition grounds, or towards that. Having recognized the cost pieces is linked to their overall costs in discussions with the farmer's market, we want to dig in a little bit deeper and get an understanding of what they're talking about with their costs, and it's their overall cost of the year of every location they go to. That was something that Farmer's Market requested me to pass along, that maybe they weren't 100% clear in the presentation, that it was the entire year's locations versus just at the exhibition grounds. Displacement of Farmer's Market during events, so from time to time, there will be instances where our regular users may be displaced by an event that requires the use of the majority, if not the entire exhibition grounds. And an example that we would use is Music Fest. Currently, Music Fest is the one time that Farmer's Market is being displaced, and this stemmed from a 2013, prior to 2013 in the history, there was a mutual agreement between Music Fest and the Farmer's Market that they would coexist on the exhibition grounds. And in 2013, there was a discussion that they want to look to see if there's a way for Farmer's Market to move up to the sports center. From what I understand, this was a mutual agreement at the time between Music Fest and the Farmer's Market, and that sports center staff would help make the transition up to the sports center as smooth as possible. Staff do their best to collaborate and build partnerships with and between the users so they can coexist together on the grounds, and if a partnership cannot seem to be made, then regular users may elect to shift their events to another date or accept an alternate location if available, to ensure that they can continue to provide their event in the community. When we talk about that, when we look to see what other areas that we have are available, generally for us, it is our sports center, or it can be potentially the aquatic center. We can try to build partnerships with the North Island College. You know, there's several ways to look to build a partnership to help if a user group is displaced off of the grounds. We try our best to have that happen very seldomly, and try to get groups to work together. So this year, the Comox Valley Exhibition Association reached a partnership with the Farmer's Market, and they're all coexisting in their event at the end of, normally at the end of August. For utilities, when the Farmer's Market is displaced, they have typically moved to the sports center parking lot. And again, in the recent discussions, we may have found a better setup than the one that perhaps we've been providing and that they've been using. And again, it's about working with the other user groups, and in this case, it would be working with Music Fest, as the parking does creep up into the sports center parking lot for the Music Fest. So we think we may have found a little bit of magic with restructuring the way the parking lot is set up for the Farmer's Market, and in turn, that would allow them to be able to plug into the electrical at the sports center facility, which is going to therefore mean less generators. There still need to be generators for those vendors that would be running along the school side of the parking lot at the sports center, but looking for some solutions to help them in the event that a partnership can't be found this year with the Music Fest. Moving forward to get a better grasp on ground usage and flow, staff are proposing funding in the upcoming 2020 budget to review circulation and landscape improvements to the exhibition grounds, and during this process, the idea of additional space for the Comox Valley Farmer's Market during large events would be something that's reviewed. We have, as an example, we do have the Stonehenge property that we recently purchased, was in the last three to four years, and the goal is to look to see now, how can we utilize this property? So one of the first steps that have happened here in 2019 is staff have done an electrical assessment on all the electrical at Stonehenge to get it caught up to proper standards, current standards, proper voltage, so that it can be utilized in a way for plugins, and we see that as an offering for these big events. And if big events can sprawl a little bit wider, then some of our other users may not have to move. That's our hopeful goal in the future. So on that note, our recommendations, that the Comox Valley Farmer's Market continue to pay fees in accordance with the Comox Valley Regional District Fees and Charges bylaw, and further, staff continue to encourage collaboration of large event organizers to include some of the pre-existing regular exhibition grounds users where possible. And finally, that the Comox Valley Farmer's Market discuss utility needs with the C V R D staff to share a better understanding of their needs if they continue to use the sports center site in the future. And I'm most happy to say we're well into that discussion. And that's all I have, so thank you, and we'll take any questions.
Yes, we have some questions. Director Greve?
Thank you very much, once again, Jennifer. Of course, the problem with all these user groups is you can't please everybody all the time. We heard a presentation from Music Fest asking for money for Music Fest. Maybe the board doesn't know, but the Electoral Services Committee are undertaking a review right now on our arts and culture grants, so we're going to be taking a look at what we can do to improve that. Right now, we give $4,000 to the Farmer's Market, perhaps we give some money towards Music Fest as well to help free their costs, but that comes out of the budget of the three electoral areas, of course. We've got the conundrum, again, of having a site. We've done, I don't know where we're at right now in a long-term debt, I think we've got about five years left or so, for the upgrades we did insofar as the water and the electrical kiosks there. That was huge. I don't care what anybody says. I always said, you know, when it comes to the Music Fest, my answer to Jay Elvison and Doug Cox has always been, well, you know, we've given you a fishing rod, not fish, right? So I think we can work something out that's equitable, maybe a little bit of a bump there, but once again, these figures may be out, I think I got them off the budget binder from a couple of years back, but I think total rent for the site to all user groups for the year was like about $27,000, and I believe our hydro costs were about $24,000. That coupled with our servicing our debt, you know, it's really not in any way, shape, or form paying for itself, you know, because we are, we're offering a public space, you know, that we want to see. So a lot of, this may be lost on a lot of people. As I say, the electoral areas can maybe kick in a little bit more with our art and culture to help out. Talking about Stonehenge, turn your mind back to that, it was a, at the time when that property came up for sale, there was a tacit understanding around the board that that was being purchased primarily to build some kind of facility on that ground, and I know that seems to be contentious in the modern day, but I will tell you that the C V X and the Comox Valley Farmers Institute are still actively working towards that end. They obviously don't have the wherewithal of the funds right now to do it, but I campaigned very, very strongly to purchase that property when it came up, and it was a real uphill battle, but we managed to get it. I would say that I think there's a lot of understanding between the Farmer's Market and some of the groups. I talked Keith Curry today, actually, from C V X, and he said that they brought them on-site, and it worked out really well. So I think, you know, through dialogue, there's solutions, and I just would encourage everybody to keep talking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Halian?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report and all the work involved. I'm just curious about, obviously, the Farmer's Market representatives know that you're making this recommendation. You've talked about the fruitful discussions. What was their response to your plan to basically suggest that we not give them any breaks on the rent?
Through the chair, if I may say, there seemed to have been a bit of a miscommunication or a misunderstanding during the presentation and in discussions with the Farmer's Market just actually two days ago, they were not looking for a decrease in their rent. Through the discussions, they were very clear, that's not what they were looking for, and it was more the part about the collaboration and helping them be able to stay on-site during Music Fest. That was the big marker, and if they are unable to stay on-site, how can the Regional District Sports Center staff help with things such as generators and electrical? And they're planning on presenting their same presentation that they did in November to the City of Courtney in January.
Oh, great. Thanks for that. And just another small matter with regards to the recommendation, a small point, but I'm just wondering if the final section of it should actually reverse the order and state that the C V R D staff discuss utility needs with Comox Valley Farmer's Market, as opposed to us making a motion for what the organization should do. That's all, thanks.
Thank you.
Director Frisch?
Thanks again, Chair, and thanks for the report. I'm actually really glad to hear that we're able to meet their needs and hopefully work with them to make their work easier and more consistent. And I guess I'll just say for this board's amusement that I look forward to seeing them at the City of Courtney, because I personally would like to have them in our downtown someday. So you might lose them as a tenant, and all $1,700 a year, so be careful.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I guess I'll ask Jake to read the recommendation, although Jennifer already has read it. Oh, sorry, yes. All in favor of receipt? That's carried, so to the recommendation with the change suggested by Director Halian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the recommendation, as noted, is that the Comox Valley Farmer's Market continues to pay fees in accordance with the Comox Valley Regional District Fees and Charges by law, and further, that staff continue to encourage collaboration of large event organizers to include some of the pre-existing regular exhibition ground users where possible, and finally, that C V R D staff engage with the Comox Valley Farmer's Market to discuss utility needs and gain a better understanding of their needs if they continue to use the sports center site in the future.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Yes, we'll invite Director Hamir back to the table.
She's probably going to excuse herself to this next.
So the next item is the Chair Vice Chair Remuneration? Thank you, and I'll just speak to this. Cumberland has a unique position of just having the one seat at the board, and so we divide those duties, myself at the board, and the alternate, who is Director Sullivan this year, will sit at hospital and solid waste. So I was unable to chair the solid waste board, so I asked Vice Chair Hamir to do it, and she graciously accepted. In return for that, I would like to give her a portion of my salary, $5,000 annually, and I think that covers at least some of the work that she'll be doing. As we heard earlier, the chair position for the waste board is split between Strathcona member and the vice chair, so I think she only has to chair three meetings a year. So hopefully, it's not too onerous, but there is a recommendation here.
So I can still receive?
Oh, sorry, yes, we're on receipt. All in, all in favor of receipt? Oh, sorry. Yeah, there are two questions, actually. Director Grant?
Thank you. So I was vice chair of this board at one point, and there is a lot of work to being vice chair, even if you don't chair, and it's, I've long wondered why there is no remuneration for that. I know in the communities, we used to have a deputy mayor where they got paid a little bit extra. That was ended, but what they did was took that money and gave it to everybody else, and then they rotate it through. So, you know, I like this recommendation, except I don't think that you should have to give up $5,000 in order for that to happen. So I would, if, when we get to the recommendation, I would just say, take out the part where it says of the 2020 chair's remuneration, and just give the vice chair $5,000, because I think it should be an ongoing thing anyway.
So, yeah, in response to that, we did discuss increasing remuneration for vice chair and for other chairs of committees, and we thought that it was something that is usually done toward the end of the term for the following group of politicians, so we can discuss it further, though. Director Halian?
Thank you, Chair. I may have missed this, but I'm just wondering if staff could clarify whether there was any change that was required to permit the vice chair to chair the Strathcona Waste Management Board?
No.
Okay, so.
Because in the absence of the chair, it falls to the vice chair.
And so that's automatic?
Yep.
Thank you.
Director Greve?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yeah, I echo a lot of those feelings. I was vice chair for two years and chair for four, and I, at one point, Fred Bates was the chair, and he was failing in health a little bit. So as vice chair, I had to go to all the chambers of commerce functions and fishing game and whatever, so, you know, I did a lot of that. And at the time, they actually had a chair, C A O., chair and vice chair C A O. meeting down in Victoria every year, and they've since eliminated the vice chairs on that, and I think that's unfortunate, because how else you get your training, you know, being a vice chair? So I'm fully in support, and I also echo the feeling that it should not come out of your salary. It should be paid for by boardroom remuneration. But one point of order, and I guess Jake would have to answer this, nothing offensive, but I'm just wondering if Arzina should be at the table while we're discussing this.
Ultimately, it's a decision around a conflict of interest, be that of the director, but in this case, this is discussions around remuneration, in which directors would all vote on any kind of amendment to a remuneration bylaw, and that's not a conflict.
Okay, just making sure she's not conflicting herself.
Director Arbor?
What was I going to say? And I want to echo Chair Kettler's comments about the bigger remuneration piece. I actually sent a little thought paper to staff around this, and I came to agree that probably it's good to wait. And indeed, in my little briefing, I was suggesting remuneration for chairs of committees as well, small remuneration. While we wait for that, I would suggest that we park it under, you know, on some advice given, and, but at the same time, I would like to say that I think this is a good thing. It's a very tangible one and legitimate one. very tangible one and legitimate one, what Director Hamir is doing at that other table. And I would put the motion as presented, but, you know, there's two or three people that have suggested that we just make it additional. I'll probably support that if that motion is made. Otherwise, I'll just make the original motion.
Yeah, I think I was trying to separate those two things, the remuneration of Vice Chairs and Chairs from this particular motion, because of the neat position of Cumberland at the waste board and the Vice Chair doing that work. I wanted to compensate her for that personally, because it does take that work off of my plate. But if there's a will to see your original request about remuneration come forward again, then we certainly can do that.
Yeah, I don't really have a will, but if people want to talk about it in the next year, I can send my thoughts forward to you guys, and we can have further discussions. But I think we should just deal with the matter at hand today and get that done, and then we can move on from there.
Madam Chair, I'll just ask Jake to give a bit of advice on the alternative that you might be suggesting and what that might require.
Yeah, so just to respect, the recommendation as provided is simply, of course, to allocate just a portion of the chair's salary. If we were to go with an alternative, which is to provide more of a permanent change, then that would require, I would suggest, an amendment to the remuneration bylaw, and so that direction would be to staff to bring that bylaw back. It is noted in the staff report that such a review of overall remuneration rates is provided on a periodic basis, and so that could take place then, but it could also take place at the direction of the board at this point.
If I may, because my mic is on, if fellow directors are, based on that information, I would just recommend that we put forward the motion before us. There seems to be comfort between the Chair and Vice Chair around that, and that we just do an allocation and not reopen the bylaw. So I'd like to move that firmly. Oh, we have another receipt.
Do we do receipt?
It just needs to be voted on.
Okay, yes. All in favor? Any opposed?
I'll move the recommendation.
Should we get Jake to read the recommendation?
Yeah.
The recommendation is that $5,000 of the 2020 chair remuneration be allocated to the Vice Chair for the period January to November 2020 in recognition of the Vice Chair's role in supporting the Chair, including acting as co-chair of the Comox Strathcona Waste Management Board.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you for that. Onto new business, UBCM resolutions.
Second.
Okay. And Director Moran, are you going to speak to this?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. If you could indulge me just for a couple minutes. So this, just to provide a bit of rationale for these two resolutions put forward, most of you will remember that they were originally put forward by Victoria Council at the AVICC, and they were passed without opposition, to my recollection, in terms of there was nobody speaking at the opposing mic on them. And they were taken to UBCM but didn't make it to the floor for debate. So Victoria sent letters out to local governments, including CVRD, to lobby to have those resolutions taken to the provincial government. And City of Courtney actually, Councillor McCollum presented the resolutions, and they were approved unanimously at Courtney City Council. So I felt it was important to, particularly because Victoria had also sent a letter to CVRD to bring them forward, and I did make a slight change. Sorry, Mr. Our wonderful men, people who tolerated my last-minute change. I did make a change to the wording to allow for toxic drug supply. Where are they here? I included "with overdose" toxic drug supply and B172, toxic supply in the other one, because the coroner's service has recognized that these deaths are related to a toxic drug supply and not overdose. So I thought that was an important distinction. So just to very quickly say a couple things, because these resolutions may not seem within our mandate, but I think they're extremely relevant to our community. And we know that there's been over 10,000 deaths in Canada just in the last three years alone, and the North Island has been on and off, has had the second highest death rate from these toxic drug supply deaths, second only to the Lower Mainland on several occasions. And we actually have, we actually have a situation where it's primarily men in their productive years who are dying from this in silence. And it's not just marginalized folks we see out and about in town. And one-third of the men who've died have been in construction and trades, 55% in the transporter trades sector. And I bring this up because, obviously, we have a large number of folks, particularly men, who are employed in these sectors here locally, and there's a variety of reasons why this is impacting them, and I won't get into all of them right now. And I asked the question about the, earlier, around how many employees would be attached to our water treatment plant, and we don't have an exact number, but that's one example of where we can increase jobs in these sectors, but these men are really at risk, whether it's in Fort Mac or here locally, working on a water treatment plant. There was a student, an economics student, who did a thesis, basically, on this issue and said that 4.73 billion is lost in labor productivity since 2016, and actually, the life expectancy of men is down for the first time ever to almost a quarter of a year less, whereas we've seen life expectancy go up in recent years. So to wrap up, I just think that this has an economic impact. It has, obviously, health impacts, impacts on our first responders, our own employees, people around this table, for sure. And I believe that we need to take a leadership role to reduce stigma and to make it easier for people who are experiencing a health issue to be able to access a safe supply instead of street drugs that are killing them. And if we can lend our voice to putting some pressure on the provincial government, there are avenues that the governments can take to do this. There are exemptions under the Controlled Drugs and Substances Act to do this, so this is not a foreign concept to provide a safe supply to people. And I guess that's all I'll say about it. So thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Director Moran. We had a very impactful, tearful presentation from the Hattikens at our council in Cumberland last night, and I wanted to tell them about this resolution, but I wasn't able to because I was so upset about the loss of my own family. This past summer, somebody who fits all those statistics was taken by fentanyl in our family, too. So thank you for bringing this forward. Director Hamir.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to lend my support for Director Moran bringing this to the table, both not just for the issue itself, but also, a number of us around the table were recently at a social planning of BC event, where it was pointed out that social planning is absolutely under the purview of the Local Government Act, and it's within our bailiwick to work on problems like this. So thanks for bringing it forward, and I'll be supporting the requested action.
Director Hilian.
Thanks, Chair. I'd just like to acknowledge all those who've been impacted by this issue personally. But I also wanted to cite the article in the Saturday edition of the Globe and Mail, which essentially spoke about the issues that Director Moran highlighted and focused on the city of Campbell River in our own region, and the impact on people who are involved in construction and other trades, who initially, through referral by doctors for pain medication, start using opioids, and then when they become dependent are denied the prescriptions, and so resort to street drugs, which have the results that we've heard about. I don't know what the province is going to do about this, but I do agree that the least we can do is raise the issue and add our voices to the need for a change, so that this is treated as a health problem and not a criminal one. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Greve.
Thank you. I might add that this subject has been brought up at FCM as well, Rebecca Bly from the City of Vancouver. And it was a tough one at the committee as a whole, because there's a lot of very conservative provinces that cannot see their way to supplying drugs. But it was made very plain that it's not the drugs themselves, it's the poisons that are embedded in the drugs. We all know people that have, you know, there used to be something called recreational drug use. It's not there anymore. There's people that get out on a long weekend or whatever and do a line of coke and die. So it's just not like the old days. So Rebecca was very, and of course, all the stories came out. And it was raised that, you know, people that have, that are on pain medications, people who are on anxiety medications, people who have alcohol problems. I mean, why should it be any different, right? But one of the things they did suggest was to include the fact that if there is going to be a safe supply, it should be somehow under doctor supervision.
Director Colhampton.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I also want to thank Director Moran for bringing this up, and particularly, I appreciate her adding the phrase "toxic drug supply" to the resolution. I know that's one of the things that the Hattikens spoke about very clearly, is it was not an overdose, their son was poisoned. And I think there's, it's interesting that there are so many people in the construction trades who are facing this challenge, and that may well be because it's hard work, and you injure yourself, and you're much more likely to find yourself being prescribed something that will lead you down a troubling road. So, and I just wanted to close with one, I think, very clear thought from Dr. Charmaine Enns, who, I was meeting with her a month or so ago, where she just said that we can't, we need to start talking about the toxic drug supply, because there are no pure drugs anymore. Like, it used to be that you would do heroin, or cocaine, or ecstasy, or any of those other manufactured drugs. Now, it's just a mix of anything, and anything could be anything. And certainly, the people who have overdosed did not intend to consume the thing that killed them. So, thank you, Wendy.
Okay, there's no further comments. Do we need receipt? Okay, all in favor, receipt? Any opposed? And that's carried. Onto Forbidden Plateau Reclamation Society.
Consider the recommendation.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Didn't know if Jake wanted to read it.
Did you? Do you want to read it, Wendy?
It's quite long. I don't now have to read it. Whereas the Association of Vancouver Island Coastal Communities endorsed two resolutions from the City of Courtney.
Oh, sorry. Consideration at the UBCM Annual Convention, which, if implemented by the province of BC, could start saving lives immediately. Therefore, be it resolved that the board write a letter to the provincial government expressing strong support of the following resolutions. B171, safer drug supply to save lives. Be it resolved that in an effort to save lives and reduce harm due to an unpredictable and highly toxic drug supply, and as part of a holistic response to the public health emergency, including prevention, treatment, and recovery, that the province of British Columbia work with local communities, health authorities across the province, the Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions, and the Ministry of Health, ensure that people at risk of toxic supply have access to safer alternatives. B172, observed inhalation sites for risk mitigation of overdose and toxic drug supply. Be it resolved that to ensure that people at risk of overdose and toxic supply across BC have access to observed consumption sites, services that provide space for inhalation, that the province of BC fund and work through local communities, health authorities across the province, the Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions, and the Ministry of Health to provide these services as part of a holistic response to the public health emergency, including prevention, treatment, and recovery.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Okay, now on to Forbidden Plateau Reclamation Society.
Second.
And is there anything that staff would?
Director Hilian.
Okay. Director Hilian.
If you could just speak to this. I believe everyone was here when we had the local citizens who were involved in the cleanup of Wood Mountain Park, the old Forbidden Plateau site. They formed a society for the purpose, and it was interesting. They did the work. Now they're going to disband the society, and it was, I think, a really good example of citizens coming together to take on something that needed to be done, that there wasn't the means to get done by government or other action. So it just seemed to me very appropriate that, first of all, that the province label the park for what it is, so that people who are going up there know that they're actually in a park, even though it's a Class B park, I believe, and also that the volunteers who were involved in this cleanup effort be acknowledged for their efforts through some type of signage or other recognition. So the requested action that follows is essentially to ask the province to take those two steps.
Thank you. Director Grant.
I'm just wondering about, I know this property is subject to treaty negotiations, and I'm just wondering if this is a, something that we should do. I know it says that we'll consult with First Nations, but I'm not sure where that's going to land, and that's the only concern that I really have on this.
Madam Chair and Directors, the resolution indicates that consultation will take place with Comox First Nation, and I believe it would be the ministry that would be undertaking that.
Director Greve.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to have to leave this meeting, because we're having a Christmas party for the Forbidden Plateau Reclamation Society up at Crown Isle at 6:00. So, yeah, this is very well appreciated. It was mentioned to our MLA when she rode up with Greg Sawchuck and myself to the top. This would be a good thing to get, you know, either Flynnrow or Parks, either to put up. My only question would be, would this not be a letter from the Chair to the province then?
Just half?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's what would happen, is the resolution is adopted, and the Chair writes the letter on behalf of the board.
And failing that, I guess it can always fall on the Electoral Area Services Committee's grant and aid, because it was basically the money from the grant and aid from Area B and C that carried this thing through. We got $10,000 from BC Hydro from Steve Watson as a compensation for putting that FM tower on the hill. And Timber West originally had promised us $1,000, but when we did the work and sent the letter for requesting it, they denied. They said, oh, no, we've changed our minds. So there's Timber West for you. I'm sorry. Mosaic.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, receipt?
Just receipt.
Okay, Director Hilian, if you'd like to read the requested action.
I'll read it, and certainly Director Arbor can move it, but I'd also like to thank staff, who actually did all the work on this. Jake, in particular, thanks very much. And so the requested action to be moved is that the Comox Valley Regional District Board write to the Minister of Environment and Climate Change Strategy to request one appropriate sign- signage and consultation with Comox First Nation for Wood Mountain Park, and, two, recognition of the Forbidden Plateau Reclamation Society for their volunteer efforts to clean up the abandoned buildings and structures from the former Forbidden Plateau of Skeehill.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Should we wait, or should we continue? Okay, moving on to Kamagwe Cultural Society Legacy Project. And Director Greve, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, yeah. I was approached by the Kamagwe Cultural Society to see if I would support this, and I, of course, was only too flattered to actually be asked to support it. So it's pretty well self-explanatory, and I don't think there's going to be too much discussion around this table in support of this project. Thank you.
And seeing no lights, all in favor of receipt? That's carried. And Director Greve, would you like to move the recommendation?
Sure, let's get back to it. That the Comox Valley Regional District Board provide a letter of support to the Kamagwe Cultural Society for their application to the Canada Council of the Arts for funding for the, oh, God, Malwakla Cluns, a legacy project honoring missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls. And two-spirited.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? That's carried. And we're moving on to in camera. And I'll ask Jake to read the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The recommendation is for the committee to proceed to a closed session in accordance with Section 90 of the Community Charter as it relates to personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position as an officer, employee, agent, or of the regional district, or another position appointed by the regional district.
All in favor? Opposed? And carried. Thank you.